All right, here they're going. Call the February 2020 USD 350 Board of Education meeting in order. Welcome visitors. Any additions, changes?
I have none.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Right.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Okay, motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing to report on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Right.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carried. Okay, pitch and comments. The boys are here, I figured we could talk. Nope? All right. Recreation Commission.
We're kind of at a standstill on this. We have options. As you know, the Rec Commission would like to get into a building for their office space and exercise facility. The KSB attorney thinks that a lease purchase is possible. Rec Commission's attorney is looking into that, trying to connect with that KSB attorney to see what might be possible. So that would be just an agreement between the Rec Commission and the bank. We have that with one bus right now in our other facility update that we did a few years The other option would be to, that the Rec Commission would just lease directly from the owner of the building. And then the other option that we talked about would be involving the city or the school district. You know, if the school district would purchase the building and then lease it to the Rec Commission with the lump sum. All those options require approval from this body. So for the Rec Commission to enter into a lease agreement, we need, this board needs to approve that. I think that law, I don't know the spirit of the law exactly why Rec Commissions at one point were not allowed to own real property. But I think it's, you know, the Rec Commission could be disbanded with a vote of this body and this city just to decide it, we don't want to do that anymore. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but then what happens to the property? So involving the city or the school district, I think was part of that law, was the intent of that. So somebody says, well, the school shouldn't be involved in that. Well, that's why the law was created that way. So a governing body like the school district or the city would be involved in those, owning the land. So, Trey?
I don't have a lot more to add. I mean, we're, we're still waiting on our attorney to make contact with Donna at KSB. And so the options are those that Josh just mentioned. Does anybody have any concern? Let's just say that isn't an option, because I have a hard time believing that it's going to be personally. What about the school option gives anybody heartburn?
The initial outline with our budget is the only thing that gives me concern.
I'm not as concerned about that with the discussions we've had as far as how it'd be structured. The school shouldn't be on any money as long as the contract covers the school's liability and risk. It's more up to the Rec Commission, does the building you choose fit your needs?
And we feel that it certainly does that. And so, yeah, it fits our needs. You guys wouldn't be out any money and the insurance, of course, would be addressed and taken care of. So I think we can cover all those things. Beyond that, are there any other concerns that you have?
Are we still on, what type of timeframe are we on? I mean, we've kind of discussed.
We're dealing with attorneys.
I mean, I'm saying as far as length of time for that to take place, you know, two years, five years.
Like the lease term? Well, I think, I mean, we talked about a 10-year lease. It can't be more than 10 years. The amount of dollars, the amount for the lease, for a 10-year divided by 10-year period would seem to make sense in terms of a market value for rent. And that's kind of where we came up with the 10-year number, and so that would be easy to.
If we did a one-year lease for the full purchase price, it wouldn't look like, I mean, it would just.
The perception would be.
The perception would be that we're just buying the building and they're, or the Rec Commission is buying the building and we're acting as a flip through.
Right.
So we lease it for 10 years. That's fair market value.
And that's what we're paying today essentially-ish, is right around $500 for rent anyway, so this would be the same price.
And if we did spread that out over the 10 years, we would need to recover some interest costs. So it would be more expensive for the Rec Commission to do that if we didn't do the lump sum. Also, our cash flow would be, would be an issue. We'd have to find another way to deal with that if we didn't do the upfront lump sum.
Not seeing there's no other alternatives, Trey, that you guys look at besides this building?
We did, I got, sorry to interrupt. I mean, I quoted out a, you know, a brand-new building, talked with Carolyn Dunn and them about possible properties that they might have. And then, of course, we've kind of looked around town for other buildings, but as far as the price per square foot that we're getting from this, it was much lower than anything I got quoted or looked at.
Well, and the price per square foot's fine, even if it was like, but if we're building a huge building and it adds up, even if the price per square foot's lower than what we're buying this building for, it still doesn't work for cash flow, right? And so it doesn't, the price per square foot's kind of deceiving, but we just can't afford much more than this building. And there just aren't a lot of buildings at this dollar, in this price range, that we can afford, that are going to allow us to do what we want to do. There just aren't. They're not out there.
Right.
Beyond new construction, and that's not, that's not reasonable. And that Dylan's building's not reasonable either right, right now to renovate. We've already gone down that road and looking at the price for that, and it is extreme.
The remodel cost?
The remodel cost.
It's about $300,000.
$300 or more.
To actually get a little bit bigger versions of what we're getting with, with the building we're looking at. We don't gain any like basketball court or anything like that. It's just two large multipurpose rooms, which would be, we'd get one multipurpose room in this building. And same-size office space, I mean, we do, it's the idea of having to basically demolish the whole concrete floor and put all the plumbing down on the main floor, move the bathrooms down there. It's just, it's a lot.
It is a lot.
And we weren't getting much for $300,000. And we couldn't, and the bills are going to be two to two-and-a-half times as much as this building are, so.
So ideally, if the lease purchase would work with the Rec Commission, work directly with the bank, that works better for your cash flow too, right? Even though there's some interest costs.
Yeah, yeah, we would definitely be open to that. And that's why I was hoping we could have a, have, have had them talk so we could have a little more of an idea, but it just didn't work out. So we'll know more before the next meeting, but yeah, that, we would be open to that. But if for some reason that, yeah, that doesn't work, then we're, I think we go back to the, to the school hopefully, I mean, to you guys, and that's our next best option. I think to protect, you know, to protect how we want to do this and how we want to accomplish this down the road, this is the better way to do it as opposed to doing it from an individual, in my opinion. And, and, Brad, don't you feel?
Yeah. All right, do you have anything to the building? This building that you're wanting to purchase now? Any construction to that?
Yeah, so, at some point, yeah, we're going to remodel a little bit. I mean, we'll, yeah, I don't know how extensive it'll be right up front, but as the money permits, we'll make it the way we want to.
Moving walls?
Yeah, we're, we want to, we want to take out a few walls and open it up, except for that south office, and then kind of make it all a nice workout area with an open area to do other things other than just workout too. It'll be very nice when we're done.
The lease option that we're talking about with the bank, it's hard for me, I'm not a lawyer, but it's hard for me to wrap my mind around how that's different than a mortgage. Just, and I mean, like I said, I'm not smart enough to be a lawyer, but that's the part that I'm struggling with. And I think that's probably what our lawyer's kind of struggling with a little bit too. And he hasn't talked to Donna yet, but it's, what's, is it just different wording?
Well, for instance, school districts cannot borrow money. We're, you know, you can, you can float a bond issue, you can sell bonds to generate revenue, which is kind of like borrowing money, but it's not. And a lease purchase, which when we have a bus, we're actually leasing it, I mean, it goes on our, you know, we, it's on our, it's considered our property, but the bank owns it. So we title it and all that, but technically the bank owns it. If next year we want to walk away from it and let the bank have it, we can do that. So that just, every year, we have to decide, yeah, we're going to make this lease payment, and at any time we can walk away from it.
So the bank incurs the risk?
Yes, yeah.
That might, yeah.
So maybe that's the one little difference.
Maybe.
I mean, that's what I, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't.
Okay.
And what, what, where I think, and again, I'm not going to try to say that I'm smarter than an attorney, but the whole lease purchase, at the end of the lease, you purchase it for a dollar or you acquire the title because you've paid all the lease payments.
Right.
Well, the law says you can't acquire, you can acquire a title of real property through a gift or donation, well, that's through payment of a lease, so I'll let them work it out, but I have my doubts that that's an option as well. So assuming that, if that's not an option, is this board comfortable moving ahead with that as we had discussed before? Not asking for your vote right now, but if I start discussing those things with the attorney, what are your thoughts on those? Some direction right now?
As long as we're covered, I'm okay.
They need the space.
Down, okay, as long as our, everything's okay with. Oh, we need to go through.
Just, I just don't want to make you look like we're hiding something.
Yes, I agree with that.
Sure.
Because that's what the perspective is at.
Yeah. Which, we're still basically waiting on lawyers to decide what to write.
Well, Donna's very meticulous, so I'm sure that if she gives it a go, that it's, yeah, she's, she covered all the bases.
Yeah, and our attorney's not going to let us do something that's, that's not within
Okay, well, I'll, we'll wait to hear from attorneys and I'll update the board on the address on the weekly notes and we'll have something to approve hopefully at the next meeting.
We will have, we will have something to report back. Sorry for not having anything this meeting, but it just, it is what it is. We're at the mercy of their, their timeframe. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
How's renovation project?
I don't have any action on this one. I've been talking with the property owner about the property card information is on So the house we're looking at is at 611 North Broadway. There's discussions about the possibility of donating the house, so we're trying to work through all that. It's a, it's a nice space. It's a lot better house than the other one we were looking at. Adam and Blaine and I went over and looked at it, looked at all the possibilities for renovating that. The house doesn't necessarily need a complete gut job, but it, that's still what we would do for the learning aspect of things. You know, if we're going to redo the wiring, it doesn't make sense to cut all the sheet rock out and rewire it and patch the sheet rock. We'll just take it all down.
New insulation.
New insulation, yeah. So we've come up with a specific budget. A good example is like the siding. It's okay, it's not in bad shape. It's, we would probably wait on that to decide if we can get the interior done, if it's something we want to try to tackle. So I think it's got a lot of possibilities. Adam's excited about the project. We have 20-some kids, 21 kids?
Yeah, something like that, that said they would be interested in some type of remodeling class and take it for multiple hours, we'll see how that pans out when we're doing enrollments.
Right.
Maybe we have the interest there.
And some contractors of all to, you know, help, help the learning aspect of that.
Now, is that 21 of the just St. John's kids? Because it went to a graduation.
Yes, yes. We haven't even, we haven't even communicated with other schools, have we?
No, not this time. We just wanted to see what our interest was and make sure we got projects. That's because realistically, if we have, if we have 12, 10 kids of ours that are interested, we really don't have room for any more.
Right.
Both of there. I mean, that's, we want our kids here to have the experience before we open it up to somebody else.
Looking at a block of three hours? We can take one, two, or three? Ideally, it'd be more than one hour.
Hopefully, we have a core group of kids that are there for the three hours and then some others that filter in and out through there, but.
Are you expecting it to be a semester or a whole year or?
Possibly multiple years.
Multiple years.
Because I, I mean, the demo on it, if we take all the walls, dent stud walls on the inside, fluorine, redo HVAC, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot involved in that. And so to get it done even within a school year, I think, would be really pushing it. Adam kind of thinks he wants to try to have it in a school year, but we're just going to wait and see where it goes really, because if it's a multi-year deal, it's, it's okay. And I've also talked to Adam about, you know, setting up a few field trips throughout the year to facilities where they make cabinetry here, where they, you know, make the trusses. There's several places in Kansas that make trusses to do those things, so they can see the construction site of it also, so it wouldn't just be necessarily, they kind of get to a burnout point, maybe go somewhere and see a facility or go visit a, visit a job site where they're building a house, kind of get some ideas that way.
No extreme home makeover?
This will be an extreme home makeover.
Yeah, but not the five-day, seven-five or seven days.
That's going to be the other class that's videotaping.
I'm guessing it'll be a two-year project for sure to get there.
That would be my guess on it, is two years. I think Adam's just feeling a little rambunctious, saying he'd like to have it done in a year, but.
It's one thing if it's Adam with a group of, with a crew of 10 that could work on it every day for half a day, but when we're, okay, we're going to wire in this three-way switch and we need to bring all the kids over and show them how to do it, you know, it's not just, okay, you guys go wire in those switches and there's a, there's.
You're the electrical crew.
Learning slows it down. It's not just doing the work, it's learning about it.
It'll be a good space. When we get finished with it, it would be, would we decide probably five bedrooms, too bad?
Yeah.
Something like that. Be a very marketable piece of property.
Materials, will we try to keep it local for a while?
Yes, as much as we can.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
If we can.
Yeah. There's some grants available, like through Home Depot, that we can get a grant. And Southern Winds, I think, has something as well. So yeah, contractors local. You know, we will have to have some contract work done and then other things like, you know, like electrical, you know, having Davis's come in, you know, show them a few things, but then the kids are running most of the wire, things like that. Just an update on that. We've got attorney, attorney working on the big board for that.
Awesome. Board policy updates?
Just have the one policy we looked at.
Thanks, guys.
We looked at last month. It's, and explanation is on page 35 there. It's just to clear up some language to make it a little less cumbersome to invest our IO funds. And recommend approving that as shown.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve policy updates as presented.
Right.
Nobody else is going to speak on these.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded that the board approve the policy updates as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Okay, motion carried. Calendar for next year?
We do have a draft. This is really just corresponding dates is all they did on this for the first draft of the calendar. Nothing unusual about it. It matches up pretty much like this year, our spring break, matches up with Barton. The board of regent schools are all kind of different now. KUK State, Wichita State, there, there's no consistency there. We do have two weeks of Christmas. Pretty similar, pretty similar structure.
I didn't really study it too much, but were you going to try to tie in a day or two off for the Midwinter Classic next year?
I don't, no, I don't think so.
Is that a longer tournament schedule?
Not, definitely not for next year, just because it's, right now, we've got six and, six boys and three girls teams, so we won't need, we won't be cutting into the school day at all.
Will that be the week of the 18th to the, or start on the 19th? Or will it be the week before that for the tournament?
Classic, I'd have to look at the calendar, probably, it's probably the 18th.
I believe it is, yeah, because the last two weeks are the two tournament weeks.
Okay.
So this, this time right here where we're at, we get a few days off there that, just for whatever reason, they pile up with President's Day in the end of the quarter and then spring break. It just seems like, I don't necessarily like that, but timing-wise for parent teacher conferences and all that. So if you've got other, feel free to send it my way. We have a teacher calendar committee and then we throw that out to our site council and district leadership team, get input from them. So hopefully we'll have that all put together for next meeting. Can approve it.
Okay, thank you. Board member, nope, capital outlay. Almost skipped over.
Here's where we're at, page 43, where we stand based on the budget that we established, where we end up, the difference in that beginning balance. We always have, when the accountant comes and audits our books, we have some things that we signed a contract for, like the board approves to purchase a van in June, but we don't get it until August. Well, that's showing on our balance as we have the money there, but we spend it. Well, so that's to account for that. So we end up, it usually happens this way, some of those things get lost. We had a little bit less after our audit than what, what I showed when we established the budget. Revenue, I think we will be higher. We have about $100,000 yet to come, so we'll be up, we're, you know, $335,000 or so in revenue, so a little bit more revenue than I expected. I usually budget that fairly conservatively. So then just those budget areas where we're at on, on those. So we have about $41,000 left. Estimating we'll have about 20 of that to spend. We won't spend it all. So that puts that down to 165 for the ending balance, but then it had the $100,000 revenue, so about 265, so. So we do have a little wiggle room to play with if we need to, need some for this, this current year. Vehicles, I know it's hard to see up here, but this is on page 44. Might even be hard to see on your device there, but we have our five buses and the mileage on those. Bus number one, we've been putting some dollars in to repair that. We used it for an activity bus and we converted it to a, to a route bus. It really needs to be a backup, so it's showing its age. So I'm looking at replacing that one. This number eight is just a backup. It's, we call it old smokey because it burns more oil than it does diesel. Other buses are in pretty good shape. And then our passenger vehicles, we're in pretty good shape there with our rotation. So the replacement plan, this year, we replaced the car with a van, looking at replacing that route bus and then replacing a Suburban and then a van and then a Expedition down the road. And then five years out, I would kind of look at mileage at that point, what, what needs we have there, but tentative one on the, on the schedule there.
Have you looked at leasing? Would it be the cars and vans?
I have not. You're always going to have costs tied up in that.
Well, I was just asking because Special Ed Coiff went to do it and that, and it actually saved a lot of money, but then they have a lot more vehicles than we do. And they're almost all cars.
Yeah.
I, that's just why I was asking.
Yeah, I have not. My, my goal with that is if we've got the cash to just purchase them outright, I think that's always the cheapest way to do it. The other major thing we've got going is our HVAC, the rooftop units. So I've included this information just to show you where we're at on those units. The ones on the auditorium and, and small gym are probably in the worst shape. So there's two units on each, on the auditorium, two on the gym, one on the art room, and then there's two that run the lounge and bandroom area. There's two at the cafeteria. Those are just cooling units only. We have heaters in there that operate on the boiler system. And we have one over at the weight room. So our highest need right now is the small gym. We're not functioning with either one of those units. It's a control issue. We've, one of them has been condemned, the heat exchanger is gone. So it's about $6,500 to, to replace that for a $15,000 to $20,000 unit. So it doesn't make sense, a unit that old, to put that kind of money into it. Looking at replacing. So, oh, and each office area has one unit, it just operates on a thermostat separate from the control system. So all those units I can control from my computer and monitor them, adjust temperatures, turn them on and off from those things. The ones in the kitchen and cafeteria, the plan would be to move those, replace those, add a gas line to make those do a cool and heat. Just do away with the heaters that are in there, those old, old heaters that are in the cafeteria. So here's a tentative plan to replace those. I'm on the high side on my estimates here. So the goal here would be to get those areas where we have two units, get one new unit operable in each of those areas. So we know we've got a functional unit in the small gym, a functional unit in the auditorium and so on. So that's the goal here with the next three years, is to get one functional unit in those areas.
Josh, when you say that though, you're saying you've got two units set up or you're just going to replace one?
Yes.
Why would we do that? What's the cost of a crane?
About two grand.
Every time you break in?
Yeah, yeah. So that's the trick, is we can spend, let's say, let's stick with this number, $20,000, let's say two of that is, is a crane. So if we replace, if we replace two units, it's going to be $40,000 and, well, like $38,000 because two of that's going to be the crane. So you do save a little cost. The issue is cash flow, having the money to do it. So if it was $6,000 for a crane, that might push us more to say, we have to do two at one time because the, the cost of the crane is so much. If we get all the official bids back when they look at it and say, okay, we got to decide, we're going to just replace those two units and be done with it.
If you put a new one in the old gym and then not another new one until 2024, do you lessen the lifespan of the new one you just put in there by?
I don't think so.
Okay.
A lot of times we operate on one unit in all those areas anyway. If it gets real cold or real hot. If it gets real cold or real hot, we need both units. For the most part, one unit keeps up most of the time. It is nice to have that redundancy, but that's a good question.
I assume with new technology, new efficiency, is it, it's going to take two no matter what?
I don't know. Maybe not. Might be able to get by with one or two smaller ones.
Have you put an out for bid yet?
Oh, sort of. I've got somebody working on it, but we haven't formally said, here's the bid specs.
Okay.
So I've got it, I've got a bid, I'm going to make it public because I, we haven't officially put it out. What those numbers are, so. Just got that last week, so. Didn't make sense. So looking at our capital outlay plan, and this is just a draft, so this is an agenda item for you all to give input. Question about the crane is, is what we need to talk through. What I've got here is that, this replacement plan, so doing one unit each year for the next three years. And you see our ending cash, we want that at about two fifty. The one big ticket item is that bus. Whether we do it this year or next year, I really think we need to get into a new route bus. When Derek and I were talking through the agenda the other day, you know, he asked about used. I've not had good luck with used buses. If it was just a pavement only bus, maybe finding the right one, but you get a route bus, it's pretty rough on those, on those buses and you're not built, built well, handled well, we're saying. So, um, that's top end, I think, for a, um, not the largest sized bus, but a larger, larger bus.
How much you have now? Pretty bad shape, I mean Derek, can it go another year?
It could go another year, yeah. It could go, I think there's ten years left for the service. We can run it twenty-five years, but we can't run it twenty-five years. Fifteen is probably max for a route bus for us. And again, this one has been running as an activity bus.
I think we're going to do a free route. Case we want to do two.
Condition wise, do you think those rooftops in the tall last for this plane? Do we have a chance to hang on a couple?
They, I'm kind of surprised they've lasted this long. You know, and some of that is, we, we need to replace all of them. The other thing about replacing all of them is, is we're all replaced about the same time. And now we need to replace them all right now and having that, you know, I probably won't be here when, I don't think I will be. Somebody else might be in this seat in twenty years when they all need to be replaced and that's a, that's a huge expenditure to happen all at once. So if we can rotate that a little bit where the ages are a little bit spread out, but will they last? I don't know. They've lasted longer than they should have anyway, so. Nothing else major to note here. Put our big expenditure out about five years on the roof. Our roof is in good shape. Believe it or not, it's all where the roof meets the wall is where our issues are. So any leaks we have, we have, we rarely have any leaks that are because of the roof, the structure of the roof is, is not good and leaking. But we do need to get a handle on that and come up with a new plan there. You can see our debt service, things get a lot easier here out a few years because those lease purchase payments go away. That large one for the facility. So another option would be to do another lease or lease that bus. Lease the new bus, that frees up some cash. It adds some interest cost over time. I don't have pole vault mats in there. That was the other major, major purchase that I need to do a little bit of input on. I've talked with Coach Wade about it, but, so those are our main pressing issues that we really need to get handled on moving forward.
So you talked about getting a bus this year or next? Do you have?
This, for next year, yeah. That's what's here.
Back to the rooftop, if we pay the sixty-five hundred and fix the old one, what are we looking at there?
I don't know.
Life expectancy?
I don't know. You got your fan, all the other components. The one, the one that's broke down right now is a control issue. It's the only computer mechanism that communicates, that tells it to work and when to not work. So you do have all the other components, so I, I don't feel good about putting sixty-five hundred dollars in that.
I think that should be a backup, just in case one goes out that we don't plan on going out. You know, we had to spend the sixty-five hundred if we got forced to do it.
Yeah. But I think we can have a new one in for the fifteen, fifteen to twenty. In fairly short order.
It'd just be nice to replace both of them while you had your cranes under.
And it might be better, I'm not sure, that, you know, the layout, if we were going to do two at one time, it might make more sense to do, because they're right there close together. Do one on the gym and one on the auditorium. If we're going to do two at a time, that way we have one new one in each, in each area. You don't really have that same thing here. I'm not even sure how big a crane you're going to need to get, get, get way out there.
I was just wondering about fixing the old one and waiting a year, saving that money and then trying to do two the second year with the savings. And then keep that, one, we can just put it off towards the end of our rotation unless we have to change it out, but I don't know.
We would probably be better off, just thinking out loud here, pushing back the bus purchase and getting the two units rather than the other way around, doing the bus and putting off the rooftop.
So see when we get the bids in and then we'll talk about it from there for a bit.
There's no rush on, on any of these that, I mean, we usually approve a plan in March or April even. Probably some of the work, so. Any other thoughts? Pole vault mats. It's my intention right now not to buy new pole vault mats. It's a, it's a large expense for, you know, I don't want, I don't want to eliminate that event from some kid doing it, but even at our track meets, we, we don't have a lot of participation even from other schools, but.
Ethan, Easton maybe?
I don't know.
Something pole vault?
For sure.
Last year's page. Not Ethan.
Will that keep us from getting a regional track meet?
I don't know the answer to that.
We'd have to find a way to offer it like more roll mat facility or something if we have to.
I don't know if they allow off-site to do, you know, pole vault off-site. And there were some track meets we go to, they, they do that. They don't have pole vault, so do it at your own place and report your height.
Okay. All right. Board member activities, Debbie?
I'm supposed to be in Pratt at seven-thirty for tonight's meeting. If I make it, otherwise I'll go by phone last month. They had a tour of, of Haskins and that was the main thing tonight. One of the things we're going to talk about is options for the programs that are currently at Haskins and the life skills program. So that's the big thing. And I went to Dean Friday night and thought, hey, walked out. I, I thought the presentation for Dean, only having a couple of days to put it together was excellent. Congratulations on having the queen in your household now. You have to treat her differently.
Live with that.
That's what I'm going to say. Not Dean's deal. Close. I think it went well. Wish there was a few more people there, but well, I wish it went well.
Yeah, at short notice.
What about me then?
I went to the junior high basketball tournament and the girls got home in first place. I want to congratulate them. And I too thought Dean's, the program went well, so.
Had the same thing, I guess. Went to junior high, did well.
I think Sarah's got a new job.
No, I think Dean's thing was good and for a last minute, your job pulling it together, so. Administrative reports.
First of all, I apologize for my relaxed attire. We had a team building activity day and this is, I didn't change. ACT testing coming up for all juniors, if you remember the state of Kansas now. Past two years, last year, this year, offer ACT testing and work keys testing for all juniors. So we'll test all of them on February twenty-fifth for ACT, work keys on the twenty-sixth. Everybody knows what ACT is, but the work keys, it's kind of more of a career and technical end type test that helps students see what their strengths are in those areas. More geared toward vocational schools and junior college kind of interests. I do want to remind, you know, I talked about this last year when we did this, but one of the trends we're going to see at every school, every small school, particularly in the state of Kansas, is going to see their overall average with ACT scores drop a little bit as we start getting these results because we were just testing a select group of kids who wanted to do it. Now we're testing everybody regardless. So when we get the results back in the, in the fall, we'll, we'll see a noticeable difference in our overall average. Some of the schools, some of the bigger schools still aren't testing every student. They're still just testing their select few, so some of their scores aren't going to drop. That's the way it is. I was also going to say, basketball finished for the junior high. Free P for the girls, that's three years in a row at least, maybe four, but I think it was just the third, three in a row. So congratulations to them, coaches. We had a pretty successful season overall, I thought, with the boys and girls. Our junior high scholar bowl's underway. And we have about twelve or thirteen participants in that right now, so a good number involved in that. We do have six students who are going to Stafford and wrestling with their program. They wrestled at Larned in their first meet Saturday. We had some of our St. John kids, one of them won first in that tournament, one of them got second, and we had several other places in there. So they're, they're doing pretty good at it, so it's been a good, a good opportunity for them. We start regional basketball next week and we host, so get ready for that. It's, that's a big tournament, that's a big deal. So getting to host, that's really going to be a good opportunity for us. And we should, I'm not going to say that at my curses. I like our regional, let's just say that, so. On February twenty-first, kind of a different thing we haven't done, there's a guy from Fort Hayes that's going to come show some of our students, art and shop students, how to cast aluminum. He has an aluminum casting project he's going to bring in, he's going to start at about nine o'clock and it'll go into the afternoon with different projects. And some of our students have created molds for, for the casting of that. Trey, did you, did you do so?
I did some.
Okay. And we have quite a few, right?
Yeah, fifty.
Fifty molds? So it'll be stuff that our students created the design for. He's going to show and demonstrate how to cast that and it'll be up behind the shop. So if any of you guys are interested in that, welcome you to come up and see how that, how that goes. That's this Friday. This Sunday, this coming Sunday, we'll have new NHS members inducted at two in the cap, or in the auditorium. Again, be more than welcome to that. On March fourth, we won't have school on that day because we have our music festival for the middle school. I have high school there, but it's a junior high, I mean, I have high school, it's junior high. And it's not posted on the calendar that there's no school, but we're sending, we're sending notes out to make sure everybody knows that. I've talked to you a lot about Genius Hour and we're coming to an end here. We will, our plan right now is to have our students demonstrating their Genius Hour projects and talking about it, presenting them. At the end of the school day on March ninth and during parent teacher conferences, they'll be in the small gym where people can go through and kind of see what they have going on. That's our plan right now, if it changes, I'll let everybody know, but I think the gym's going to be big enough and we may use that hallway area out in front of the auditorium as well. So kind of exciting for the junior high, Genius Hour projects to be wrapping up. It's been a kind of a long process here, but we've got some pretty cool stuff going on. Josh kind of updated you on the teams for the Midwinter Classic earlier. We thought we had several interested in the girls' side. Couple of those have backed out. We still, we have three guaranteed, we have three, three, or two contracts plus our own. So we'll at least have those three, still a good possibility of getting one or two more. It's not too late. We have enough to do it anyway. This year may be light on the girls' side, but I think Brian's even talking about sending out contracts for the, not next year, but for the following year to some schools who are ending their contracts, like with the Fairfield tournament or wherever else they're going, to go ahead and get those contracts back in so that we have those teams lined up. Maxville's expressed an interest for sure, getting out of Fairfield and bringing theirs into us. So I think we're going to go ahead and jump on that and get those contracts rolling. It's kind of hard to believe, but we're already to the end of a quarter. We're getting there and parent teacher conferences on March ninth, we're going to focus on goals. Every family set goals for students last year, so we're going to revisit those goals and talk about course selection, which our online course selection, where the students go in and choose which courses they want to request, is open. So students can start doing that. However, I'm going to try and meet with all students this week sometime and explain some of our new classes with the way we're going to structure our Spanish classes and with this reconstruction class, just so that we understand that, or the students understand what we have going on there and what their, what their options are. Started something new. One of the centers in Great Bend contacted me and we started what's called a Stafford County Multidisciplinary Team. So it's administrators and counselors from each of the three schools along with somebody that represents like Child Protective Services, the center in Great Bend, several, three, four, four different organizations. And we kind of all just get together and talk about the students that we have that are struggling with family issues or have legal issues pending or whatever, so the strategies. It's amazing how much tie we have between the other, you know, one sibling goes here and the other one goes to Maxville or the other one goes to Stafford. So we're kind of trying to come together as a whole county administration to, to figure out how to do what's best for each of those students and families. to figure out how to do what's best for each of those students and families. I already kind of gave you a rundown on the enrollment scheduling. It's underway, and when we schedule, it's going to be kind of hectic. Mrs. Hacker's going to do most of the scheduling, but trying to figure out how to get those students in the reconstruct, in the home remodeling classes. You know, it's going to be a challenge, but I'll do the best I can. Any questions? Some of you have asked about the trap shooting before. I do have about twelve right now signed up that were still. And it's from six, I mean, I had six graders.
Another came home with one from sixth grade.
Yeah. So pretty excited. We're actually getting the numbers, that was the question, but I think we'll end up around that fifteen, sixteen mark.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, on my report, the courses and curriculum. I included the schedule here just to give you an idea of what things go where. You know, those blank spots there in the schedule are where they fit in their math and social studies and all those things, based on their schedule in each individual classroom. But all kids get art once a week, PE, music every day, and then some recess time. All those things are important. So don't anticipate many changes, just maybe looking at our class splits and what. We've got some classes that have, some grades that have two classes and some that have one, just depending on how that enrollment shakes out. So we'll try to make those decisions here next month or so on what changes might be made there. Looking at a grant for a greenhouse. We've been nominated from local farmers in the area for the Bayer grant. Used to be Monsanto. Fifteen thousand dollar grant possibility. We've got that grant, ten thousand dollars, several years ago, and updated some iPads and some equipment for one of Mr. Delp's class. But we've got that high tunnel greenhouse now that you just, you can't use it in cold weather. You know, it's not an all-weather greenhouse. It's not heated, and it's not insulated. So looking at putting in a more permanent, insulated, with heating and cooling in that greenhouse. We can use it all year. So working on that. So hopefully I'll have good news on that later in a few months. I am attending the KSB leadership for tomorrow, so I've accepted that. I've got a schedule for that. The first one's over spring break, so it'll be a good learning opportunity for me to go out to other districts and see what they're doing and see how they do things and bring back ideas to our district. Our professional development today, I mentioned in one of my notes that we went over and had lunch. They had a nice meeting room at the barn. Our focus was on with our trauma-informed, you know, our staff. You know, they learn a lot about kids. And, you know, just this last week, I've heard some things that I won't share with other people just because it's awful, awful things, you know, kids that have happened to kids. And then they have to come to our school and learn. So working with those kids, that can be taxing on us sometimes. So our focus today was on taking care of ourselves and taking care of each other as teachers. We went through our new this year, we have our employee assistance program. Through, it's through Blue Cross Blue Shield with ESDA. We have a big consortium that we're part of the health insurance pool. They have this employee assistance program, so any of our employees can get free access to legal advice, counseling, therapists, financial advice, things like that. So that's just the benefit we provide. We went over all that, and we had a little fun in the afternoon, did some team-building activities. So I think everybody had a great time, so. Our video streaming situation, we're kind of at a standstill on that. It would be nice to get that automated system. It's a pretty neat deal, if you've watched that. It's, I don't know how that's all programmed to do, but it would be cameras mounted to the wall. And for example, for a basketball game, it will follow the action. There's no people involved in that. And if somebody gets a steal and gets out ahead of everybody, we'll actually zoom in on that person making the layup. And how that works, I have no idea. But it's pretty nice, a nice system, and will be hands-off. We just have to schedule it, but it is costly, so seven thousand dollars upfront cost. And then either individuals have to pay to be a member to watch it, or we could find sponsors and we pay that bill. So still looking at options there, but right now we're kind of at a standstill. I did not work that into the capital outlay budget.
What was the yearly subscription to that?
Three thousand. So if we pay that, then everybody has access for free. And if there were a lot of schools, like if every league school was in it, it might make more sense to have people get their subscription, because then they can watch anybody. You know, I think it's ten dollars a month or something like that. They can watch all the league schools. Well, if we pay the subscription fee, then people have access to ours for free, but not others. So until it, I guess, gets a little more out there, it would make more sense if we paid that cost.
Is there a way to advertise on the screen at all?
No. Central Plains used to do that. I don't know. I think you could, you could play audio, but not to put ads on the screen. Central Plains has looked at that, because they used to do that, or they do that with their wave bands. They still do that. We need a better solution than what we have. It's not ideal.
Is it hard to move from the gym to the auditorium to football field?
Yeah, it would be stationary. It would only be in the gym, and that prices for two, meaning it's the one in the gym and one in the football field. So, yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be in the auditorium or anything. But you could use it to string graduation or any activities in the gym. We already went over Midwinter Classic legislative update. I don't have a lot. It was really sad to hear Representative Lewis's passing. I'm sure most of you heard that. He was a great asset to our state and our district. There's two weeks left, I believe they call it turnaround. Where non-exempt bills need to get out of committee. So there's not a lot on the radar. There's some hearings this week for bullying and at-risk funds. Some of those bullying things, I think, are better left to local districts to deal with rather than making laws. Teachers and administrators deal with those things better. And then at-risk funding is something important that the funding formula-wise will be important down the road.
There is one thing that's, excuse me, that could affect, not the, yeah, sickles, the library system. There's something in legislation that could affect that. So they want to do away with part of the funding to the library programs that currently they have available in Topeka for references. So I know I got something from both the south and the central areas. And I've been in contact with legislators about continuing to support that.
That's all I had for my report.
Executive session?
Got a few issues, I need at least ten minutes.
Okay. Mr. President, I'm going to the executive session to discuss the performance of specific employees and potential new hires pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, with Mr. Meyer, Mr. White to be included, and that we return to open session at seven, ten p.m. in this room.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and that the board go into executive session to discuss the performance of specific employees and potential new hires pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KOMA, with Mr. Meyer and Mr. White to be included. And we return to open session at seven, ten in this room. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, back to open session. Mr. Meyer, recommendation?
Yeah, I'd recommend we get the board approve Mr. White's contract, rolling that over for the next two years.
Move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and that we approve Mr. White's contract for rolling over two years. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
I recommend that the board approve hiring Ori Johnson as assistant high school track coach for this year.
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and to hire Ori Johnson as assistant high school track coach. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
I'd recommend the board approve the hiring of Haley Falk as assistant junior high track coach.
Move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second and to hire Haley Falk as the assistant junior high track coach. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Future agenda?
Yeah, we'll hopefully have something to do on the rec building, one way or the other, and that house project, we'll have the legal documents for that to approve. That'll take some action in the calendar, and then try to finalize that capital improvement plan.
Okay, we adjourn.
Okay, it's been moved in second and that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, get out of here.